Call to order, Town, North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority in regular Town Council meeting, North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. We'll start with salute to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and individual liberating justice for all.
All right. Michelle, if you could provide roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor McMillan.
President.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Councilor Abelson.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Gold. Councilor Mace.
Here.
And Councilor Plecha.
Here.
Okay, first and foremost, like to welcome everyone today and thank them for coming out on this soggy Tuesday. We were joking around before the meeting that all the rain that we missed over the summer came in one night, so I hope everyone's safe and sound. We are going to start with an appointment of Nicholas Palladino to replace Michael Downs as member of the Town Council.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nicholas Palladino to the Town Council as a replacement for Michael Downs.
Second. Motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Plecha. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right. Welcome, sir. Okay, we're also going to take a pause for a moment for Lisa Swerewyn.
Do you swerve your political position before you go to the lawyer? Do you recommend the North Branford Town Council to back to their building, except if you're not?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You had a fire call.
Beautiful.
All right, thank you. I will make sure you can hold him now. You can bring that up. Okay. All right. Okay, so we're going to go on to the meetings of the previous minutes. I'll accept a motion to accept August 16th, 2022 Town Council Special Meeting.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Diamond. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained as well.
Thank you, sir. All right, that passes. Thank you. And Item B, August 22nd, 2022, Town Council Special Zoom Meeting.
So moved.
Got a...
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Diamond, second by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. All right, did you get those abstentions, the two abstentions? Okay. All right, moving on to the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Item Three, Correspondent Citizen Statements. There are, are there any citizen statements? None? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to unfinished business. I see none in that category as well. Any new business for Water Pollution Control Authority? Okay, and again, citizen statements and petitions. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the regular Town Council meeting. Item Seven, Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Item A, Economic Development Commission, Roger Sawway Monthly Report. Lisa, do you have anything on that?
That was in your packet.
Oh. Let me go to our packet and take a gander at it. Sorry?
No, it was in your packets. Roger's report was in your packet.
It's part of, it's in...
Gotcha, gotcha.
Part of the agenda.
Okay, we'll review. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Item B, Parks and Recreation.
Park and Rec met at the end of August. Main things from that meeting were that the Park and Rec Commission voted to reappoint the four members to the coordinating committee for next year's POCO Fest, and then the committee, those four members, will choose a chair and an assistant, an assist, no, a, the main coordinator, and then an assistant coordinator, and that is at the request of the new purchasing agent in town, so that they have one person that they're dealing with and not the whole subcommittee. So the committee will be Steve Torino, myself, Louisa Penone, and Mary Giovani. We do not have any numbers in yet from the POCO Fest. We are still waiting for additional bills to come in, but we have already started planning for next year's. There's some major things that need to get put out to bid and done very quickly to get the major things locked in, and we will also be setting up a meeting with the town attorney to go over, get things in place for next year's POCO Fest to make life a little easier for all of us. So that will be coming up soon. The Director's Report at the meeting, they had a very successful year in their summer camp. They had an eight-week camp, and almost every week they had a waiting list of kids to get in. They serviced over 600 students during that timeframe. And North Farms Park was completed thanks to the help of Franny and his crew, and I can tell you that that park has been very much used once it reopened. There is always parents there with their kids. It's really, they did a great job, have a nice array of things there, so that park is done. And they served over 200 meals through the senior luncheon program for the months of June and July, and they're getting all of their programming in place for this fall.
Thank you. I did have a citizen ask me about North Farms Park with the jungle gym equipment moving a little bit closer to the road. Was there any plans, and I can direct this toward you, Franny, were there any plans to possibly put a fence up towards, on 139?
No.
Okay. I know there's a dip there and it, you know, kind of separates it, but there was that question that several people asked.
There's a difference between that playground and the...
Yeah, there is.
I haven't gone through there yet.
Yeah, it's pretty far away. I mean, what they did, they moved all of the jungle, all of the equipment, the swings and everything, so that it's between the pavilion and the soccer field. So they made it one long slip strip there instead of having some of it go down besides the, yeah, the pavilion. So...
I think the kiddie stuff is closer to the woods.
It is. The younger, the five to 12-year-old is the big piece of equipment that is, if you're looking at it, to the right of the pavilion. But it still doesn't even reach the end of the soccer field. I mean, that fence that is for the soccer field, so.
That's good. I haven't drove by it yet. I mean, I've drove by it, but I haven't stopped to look, so. But from what I heard, it's fantastic, so it's great work.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, on to Item C, Police Commission.
The next meeting for the Police Commission is next Monday, September 12.
Okay, thank you. We'll get a report next time. Item D, Fire Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was unable to make the meeting this month. However, I did get some updates, and I do stay in contact with the chief and the chair, and I would like to just recognize a few people that they recognized at the meeting. So there's a few new firefighter ones. Tate Barberato and Nick Ash were recognized as new firefighter ones. Also, we had some new firefighter twos, which is the next level of firefighting. We had Art Hausman, Gary Peterson, Nick Olson, Ken Ash, Jack Mascari, and Jake Houston. And then, once again, you might, this name might be becoming familiar to you all as it is to me, but Liz Connolly was recognized. She's a paramedic, and I'd have to say, and Chief, if you can help me out a little bit, I'd say like the past few months, just about every month, she's been recognized for something, correct?
Yeah, she's doing a great job. What she did in the field, there was, your call during the last month, council may have had a pretty serious accident on Route 80 where a gentleman from town succumbed to his injuries. In the field, she did a surgical, like, doesn't happen that often in the field, and she was recognized from the folks at Yale for doing it successfully in a very high-stress situation, a skill that's not used frequently, but she performed masterfully and gave the guy a fighting chance. And she was recognized from the folks at Yale, so we recognized her as, as Councilor Plecha mentioned, at the Fire Commission meeting as well.
We certainly thank her.
You know, I, she's at every Fire Commission meeting. She, she's very involved, very dedicated, and, you know, for a town that has the volunteer department, we're extremely lucky to have people like her, so just want to say thank you to Liz. The ambulance, the second ambulance continues to work great. We're still working on getting some stats together. I'll have a better idea of stats for you next month. And then Anthony's doing a great job, too, because he's also looking at how much money we're recouping from the different calls. We've had, we've lost a lot of money in the past because we've let, you know, certain things slide as far as, you know, not following up on some bills for transportation, transports to the hospital. So they're taking, with the addition of the second ambulance and the added cost to the town, they're taking a hard look at that, and they're coming up with different ways to try to recoup some more money to help support that second ambulance, which I commend him for doing because every little bit helps, as we all know. And that's pretty much it for tonight. Like I said, I'll have a little bit more detail for you next month.
Thank you, sir. I echo your thanks to Ms. Connolly and the other folks that have increased their technical knowledge from the field. We appreciate our volunteers very much. They do a tremendous job for our town. All right, on to Item E, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, there was two items on the agenda. One was the storage facility for public works, and I believe that was tabled for some further investigation. I think it was for the fire department. Do you know that, Fran?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they're just doing a little bit more research, right? Yeah. And then the...
They should tell the people that, that they're going to look at that all the time.
What's that?
They should, they should explain that they go, if it goes, planning is on, we have to need the fire department to okay something. You know, versus staff here, we would have done it prior to that.
Right. Yep.
So again, you gotta be open.
Yep. And then the other item that was on there was modification of an existing site planned, the car wash up by the Guilford Line there. He wants to add a used car sales there. That, I don't recall, I don't recall what, if they tabled that again or not, or if they passed it. But I didn't watch the film yet.
Okay. All right, we could certainly get an update on that. Thank you. Okay, on to Item F, Finance Subcommittee.
We meet next Tuesday.
Okay. And Item G, Public Safety Commission Subcommittee.
Okay, the Public Safety Communications Committee met on August 23rd. Some of the mobile units are starting to come in. I think the most interesting thing is though, the dispatchers have had their first round of training. They had that on August 30th. They had training on the councils. They, according to what I heard, I'm talking to the chief, the dispatchers were very impressed with all the new capabilities of the system. On the week of the 19th of September, NORCOM will come in to do some prep work. On October 4th, they'll be able to start moving over to the new system. They'll still be on the old frequency, but they'll be able to use some of the capabilities of the new council. In terms of the towers, Tilcon Tower, they've started setting up the conduits. They have excavated for a concrete pad, so things are moving along. I think the chief thinks they'll be done by the end of September. I guess it goes pretty quickly once they get the pad in. In terms of the Northford Tower, as I think everybody knows, they can't start that until October 1st because of the bats that are there. They're protected and the trees, so that once October 1st comes, they can start working on that one. But in the meantime, I think it's great that they're able to starting to use some of the system.
Are they not protected on October 1st?
That's it.
They go elsewhere for Halloween.
All I know is that's it.
That's when they get served with the eviction page.
Oh, I was just wondering what the...
You just said, "What's in everyone's mind?"
It was the signing council that said that. They had to wait until October 1st.
Oh.
Maybe they migrate.
Okay.
For Halloween or something like that. All right, well, thank you for that update. Appreciate that, and we all, a little more intelligent on bat migration. Okay, Item Eight, Town Manager's Report. Lisa, thank you.
Okay. So as far as COVID-19, I'm happy to report that our positivity rate has gone down finally. We were at 17% and we're down to 5.8%. So we're actually lower than the state level for, that hasn't happened in a while. The state positivity rate is 8.97, so that went down, too. So we're holding steady there. So I have a couple of other items to report on that aren't here. First, you have a memo from the Park and Recreation Director, and it's in reference to RFP Number Three, the Townwide Parks Feasibility Study. There's no action required. This is just to notify you that the RFP will not be awarded per her memo. The Park and Recreation Commission reviewed the RFPs, and they all came in over budget, so they decided to re-advertise it later and change the scope. So there's no action, just so that you know, will not be awarded. I attended a UI Distribution Rate Increase Proposal that UI is proposing to PURA, and basically, the information we have right now is they propose two plans, two options to PURA. One is a levelized and one is an unleveledized plan. Levelized means it's, the rate would increase at 5% for three years, so 5% year one, two, and three. The unleveledized, year one, it would increase at 8% or then, and then 3.5, 3.5. So PURA will make that decision as to whether or not it goes through, or even if it goes through at those rates. The two good points that they presented were they were, they are introducing a low income rate, or they're asking for it in the same proposal, and also an economic development rate, which would help you if you have new businesses coming into town. They would give them a lower rate for five years to phase it in to help the towns entice businesses to come in. So those are, those two options are also in the proposal, so we have to wait and see what gets approved. Frontier is upgrading. That was another meeting we attended. They're going to be upgrading the infrastructure to include fiber optic, and it's townwide. They are receiving some federal and state funding grants to do this. They've already done 70 towns in Connecticut, so it's going to be the, every town, it's, they're starting with single-family homes, and the reason for that is with condominiums and apartments, they have to get permission from the homeowners association and the owners of the apartments to go on there to do. It's a little bit different, I guess, when you're having multi-levels. And there's slated to begin, they started actually September to October, and they're giving us a video to put on the website, and it also includes a listing of names and phone numbers to call if residents have any questions. We received the absentee ballot grant. It's in the amount of $4,004.42, so the state is anticipating a high number of absentee ballots again this year, so they gave us money upfront for that. Also received a historic document preservation grant in the amount of $5,500. That's something I applied for as town clerk, and it's just an ongoing project that I do with back file scanning and indexing, and we use one of the secretaries, and we actually use Fran's Secretary of Judiciary. Does the work for us. The National Opioid Settlement Funds, North Branford received $7,608.22 on September 1st. The, we have to use at least 70% of the funds for future opioid remediation efforts. So with that in mind, when the new town manager begins, we can probably get a plan in place and maybe talk with Louisa, who does social services, the fire department, and the police departments to see how we can expend those funds. North Branford PD Project, if you'd like me to address that. What happened was we applied for a federal grant. We had to wait for the award of the grant, which is taking place shortly. After the award is made, the funds are put on hold until an EHP, an environmental and historic preservation review, is completed by FEMA. So that was the piece we were unaware of, and we just found out Friday afternoon, late Friday afternoon. So what we're doing now is we are waiting. Rosa DeLoro, who was, you know, who actually helped us get the funding, her office has been contacted, and we've reached out to FEMA. So the latest news we have right now is FEMA's, the FEMA team will be meeting with us, meaning I'll be in on the meeting sometime this week. We haven't gotten an exact date, but it will be this week with me, with David Palumbo, our purchasing agent, and our police chief or deputy chief, whoever's available. And basically, we cannot start any work on the project until this review is complete. If we did, thank God we found out, if we did, they would have pulled the funding. It would have disqualified us. So it's just on hold, hopefully temporarily. Temporarily, I don't have a timeframe yet until I meet with FEMA this week, so I just wanted you to be aware of that.
But FEMA's been very open to having conversations with us, make sure, from our conversations. That's great.
Yes, they are.
Do we, do we know where we stand with Newfield Construction?
We contacted Newfield, and we did ask them, you know, we told them not to deliver the equipment. Well, the good thing was it poured like crazy today, so they couldn't do any work anyway. They were, they're just planning to do some site work, but FEMA says no until they okay it. So they're aware of it, and we'll keep in contact with them to let them know when it can begin. Hopefully, it's short-lived, but I won't know until I meet with FEMA.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good job. I know this isn't your job, so, and it was a lot, so, good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to echo that.
We're trying to keep it moving.
I know for holiday weekend, you spent a lot of time in this town hall, and we've had some...
Few hours each.
Internet outages and other areas of concern, so for all you folks that were here and helping out and make sure that this project's on the move forward, thank you. It's not, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate it. Tremendous amount of work to run a town, and you're doing two jobs. Many of you are. So, thank you. Okay, Permanent Project Building Committee. We have, we'll start off with MBHS update. David, would you mind?
Yeah, so Dave Palumbo, 77 Glen Meadow. On the prior conversation with Lisa, we had talked, we had gotten that information late on Friday. So unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of time at 4:30, 5 o'clock. We dealt with it Friday night. Lisa and I have been on it all day today. I did get a call from Rosa's office at about 5:30 that they are definitely going to have FEMA in touch with them to be in touch with us. Somehow, the ball got dropped to the previous town manager somewhere along the line. Unfortunately, it happened. We need to move forward. Lisa's been excellent with us Friday and all day today. I feel bad. She's been going round and round with us, so we're going to work on that, and we're going to move as fast as we can. Permanent projects, we didn't meet last night. We gave you an update a week or two ago, but I do have Rusty here for MBIS, and I have Gil Bain here on the incident that happened today. So if you want to hear from Rusty to give you an update on what we talked about a couple weeks ago. Rusty?
Why don't we do the other way around? Why don't we hear about incident today?
Yeah.
Talk about MBIS, and then Rusty, we'll have, is that okay with you?
Sure.
All right, and David?
Wanted to make sure Rusty...
Thank you for all your work on this. I know you've been working hard and getting this coordinated, so you and your team...
Yeah, no problem. I mean, you know, I'll be out on the site tomorrow with the Gil Bain folks and reviewing it all with them. The building official was there today with Amar. I just couldn't make it today, you know, with everything else, but I will be there tomorrow for a good part of the morning with Amar.
Okay.
Hello, sir. I'm Ash Mas with Gil Bain, project executive regarding the North Branford High School project. So just as it relates to the incident, obviously with the significant rain event that we sustained, we continue to sustain about six inches plus in the past 24 hours. Obviously, with the roof being under process, under construction right now, we, some areas were breached inside the building that resulted in obviously wetting some sheet rock and insulation. Well, I got on site about just before 9 o'clock. The building official or the building inspector was on site as well, walked the entire building within every single location, identified the locations, and we are going to, we are in the remediation mode right now, identifying all the areas, and we're going to be removing those areas that are wet, obviously. He's going to be inspecting every single location. Our roofer will be on site tomorrow. It's unfortunate situation where the ridge vent was not installed in the area where the roof was 90% completed, and that area was breached under the metal and received some water. Unfortunately, the event that we had about two weeks ago was coming through the windows. The windows, again, walked through with the inspector, and he observed the window locations were fine. It's the areas that unfortunately are under the roof with a significant amount of rain. It's work in progress. We're going to continue to keep an eye on it. We have our trade contractors onboard tomorrow morning to start tempering that ridge vent area as well as repairing any punctures in the membrane that's on the A side of the building, which is the area that you don't see the green roof on. So again, it's, the entire roof system is going to be completed in the next about six weeks, because it is a lot of metal that needs to be installed. But ultimately, our goal is to make sure that the building remains tight, and areas are going to be constantly repaired and inspected by the building official before we pack, before we cover it.
So no structural integrity issues?
No, absolutely not. It's all cosmetics, and yes, it's an unfortunate situation, but...
Sheetrock insulation, ductwork.
We don't want to see mold...
Yeah, I mean, it's primarily sheet rock and insulation, I'm sorry.
You don't want to see mold presented if you leave that...
Oh, absolutely. Again, our goal is to open it up and make sure that before we cover it, that the building official or building inspector reviews the areas and signs off on it.
And in that way, under what contingency is this being pulled in order to make these changes, these necessary updates?
Currently, you mean as far as cost?
Correct.
At this point in time, obviously, we have funds within the GMP itself to address those areas. Our immediate action is to actually get the areas repaired, and then, you know, add it all up and figure out a path in terms of, it's not significant cost, to be frank with you. We had about eight carpenters working today, and probably going to take another two days or so of carpenters to put it back and tape it. It's not significant cost. It's an unfortunate incident, and again, it's, there is a couple of avenues to approach it depending on the, on the, it is weather, water incident, if you will, and there are provisions to address that, so we are addressing it within the contingencies within the project itself.
Okay.
And we'll make sure, come next Monday, the 12th, we'll have an answer for you guys as to how we're going to handle it with Gil Bain and Jeff DiNefrio and their team as well, so.
Just to be clear, the building committee did raise concerns with you previously about that work being done before windows were put in and before the roof was complete, correct?
There was discussion, I mean, the building official and the building inspector has been involved all along the way as far as us installing work. The window locations, where it was breached, obviously, there was a couple of areas. The more related to, you know, details that we needed in order to enclose the areas and be able, so we temp those in regardless of the detail, if you will, and we're going to continue. It's all being done under supervision of the building inspector. We're not just proceeding with the work without regards to a building official who's actually been involved and continues to be involved with the project as far as...
So you need to get the building inspector's permission before you put up any sheetrock?
Absolutely, because all the...
I'm the building inspector. I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow as well.
All interior walls have to get all-in-wall inspection before we cover them, before we even insulate them. He has to review if there's any mechanical, electrical systems within the walls. He has to sign off on them before we even insulate them. So typically, we do all that under their guidance.
So all that, all the insulation, sheetrock has to be pulled out, have it inspected, and then, like I said, tomorrow I'll be on site with these guys to go over it all.
But what I'm saying is, when you're building the building, right?
Yes.
Let's say there was no issues at all, ever. Once the inspector comes and inspects electrical, mechanical stuff in the walls, and you start putting up, then you go and you start putting up sheetrock, does he, does he give you permission to start putting up sheetrock, or does he just pass the mechanical?
No, they tell us, that's, there's multiple inspections on the walls. There's electrical, if there's plumbing, they give us the sign off on that. Then they say, okay, close one, sometimes they tell us to close one side, and then they say it's all been passed inspected, even the insulation. Sometimes they say, okay, now you're good to go as far as covering it up.
Each tray has to be inspected.
And we do the same thing with the ceilings as well. Any cavities have to get inspected.
The ductwork, are they going to, they're going to rewrap the ducts?
We have one area that's from the previous, that's been marked. We X them out that where the insulation has to be removed, and again, that's going to get inspected. And again, that's gonna get inspected as well. It's unprecedented, it's, we got-
This is the same area?
Some of it's the same areas that got affected two weeks ago.
But we have not repaired it and ripped that again. It's still in process because we want to rip it out and have the building official look at it.
The building official sent me an email. He had been in contact with you. And he said anything that got wet, the insulation, the sheet rock and that wrapping or some of it, needs to, all, anything that was wet needs to be replaced. He emailed you, you emailed him back and he said he'll come, you know, once you do that, before you close, I have to come back and see that you did it. And he, he, he wrote back confirmed.
Right.
So.
Absolutely.
Okay, so last question I have, at least from my part, is-
Sure.
We're on some tight timeline to get these kids in the school by January 1st. Does this put us in any jeopardy of that?
This has no, no schedule impact.
So right now, we're still on schedule to have this year's class move into that building in some point in January?
Correct. That's absolutely, this has no real, no schedule impact whatsoever.
Good.
It's, we have other areas that we haven't closed up, but this will not have any impact-
Good.
From a schedule perspective. And the damaged areas, really sheet rock and insulation's readily available. It's not material that's, has any significant lead to.
Okay.
The biggest thing is we gotta get these guys to secure the roof.
And that's for-
I don't know when the next window delivery is, is it next?
Windows are all, all the frames we have.
Right, but the glass.
The glass is, again, because of supply chain, we lost one of the glass manufacturers that was approved, so we had to switch to Pennsylvania glass man. He is delivering about 100 to 120 panels every week to us. So we are moving, if we don't have glass, we're putting either poly or plywood just to secure and also keep it dry.
Okay, and the roof is gonna be mitigated?
Correct. That's tomorrow. We have a crew that's gonna tighten it up and then it's an ongoing for at least the next six weeks when we're gonna start installing. The metal is, it's a lengthy process.
Of course.
It has to go systematically.
But I'm assuming there's a process to understand whether it can't be stopped, so, you know, particularly this time of year when we're prone to the possibility of tropical storm or hurricane.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, insurance is obviously in play for these type of things, but rains are gonna happen, so we have to be aware of that. Okay, well, I thank you for the update. Is there anyone else on the board here that wants to ask a question before we let Amar?
Regarding the police department? The extra funds that we received from Vincent DeLora and Christina Cullen, is there any stipulations on that?
So-
That's, that's not Amar.
No, no.
Yeah, Amar, you're, you're good to go. Thank you.
As Alan and I talked, we're talking more than I talk to my wife. We asked the same question and that's something that, we couldn't get the straight answer, but I, I think Vinnie will get us the answer we need, so we don't have the same problem-
Right.
That we're having now that the ball got dropped to the previous administration, town manager. That if the funds are coming from the state, what do we have to do and what do we need to do in order to get that, if there's paperwork? Yeah, it was a question I rose last week after this incident happened, so. And again, we should have those answers for us, hopefully this week and we'll be able to report on permanent projects next week. And anything else, Lisa will keep you guys updated as well. You guys don't meet for two weeks?
Yes, correct.
So hopefully we'll have answers this week on that.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question, Dave, in regards to the high school, since we're still on that. So I've been hearing from some people in regards, and maybe Rusty might have to jump in on this one too. But is there a line item for not regular furniture? And I know there was 300,000 or somewhere around there and then there's 125,000 dollars. That was a separate thing for various equipment?
There was the shop equipment?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what it was for, but the bid came in higher than what it was.
I think that's the shop equipment that we've been dealing with and we now can put the, well, the shop equipment, we decided we're gonna wait 'cause that's the next phase. So we can get into the workings of that, because when I did inventory with John Florio and CSG, we have a tremendous amount of equipment in that. Between gym equipment, shop equipment, and we just talked about that at our last meeting, that we're gonna, we have time to put that on hold, correct?
Yep.
And we may go out to rebid all of it for what we do need. Some stuff we don't need, so we're gonna pull that out, so, at this point.
I, I guess part of my concern is that, you know, we still have a large area, a lot to do on the high school in Phase Two. You know, the whole demolition, the building and everything else. And, you know, our contingency is very sacred.
Yes.
And we have been assured by the Permanent Project Building Committee that they are not coming back to the council for any, for one penny.
I'm not, I'm not ever gonna come back to you guys. You're gracious enough to give us what you did.
So I'm, I'm concerned about a list of things that are wants versus needs.
Needs, right, right.
And I, I know there was much discussion at the beginning of the project, meeting with teachers from various departments and-
Those wish lists and Christmas lists are gonna be dissected as to what we do need and what we don't need.
Right, well, I guess my concern is that are they all things that can wait until the end of the project to see we can, if we can see how much money we have left and then prioritize the wants and the wish list, rather than just going out to order them and now they're here and now we have a change order because we had 100,000 dollars and the bid came in at 300,000 and you just, they just go ahead and order the stuff, but there's no money.
Right, right. So that's what we worked on last week and we're gonna work on it this week again with Rusty. Because the, the wish lists, you know, nobody ever, we don't know what the wish lists were until after the fact. Or the Christmas list that everybody wants, you know, everything brand new. So we're gonna look at that money. Some of it's already on hold till next phase and Rusty can weigh in on where we stand with the rest of the bid as we discussed last week. But yeah, I agree that there's, there's some concerns there.
I, I have a, I have a concern too, 'cause I'm, I'm hearing, maybe you guys can confirm or deny it for me, that people are go, some people are going around, I'm mentioning names, around the building committee and going directly to, to you guys and requesting certain things for the project without going through the building committee first. I'd like to make sure that everything's going through the building committee.
Yeah, we made that, to your credit, we actually said that to Rusty the last couple of weeks, that nobody is allowed to go beyond us. Stops with us and then stops with you guys. And to Rusty's credit, I, I think a lot of that happened prior to us, that whether it was administrators or teachers, I guess you can weigh in, that, that had discussed these things, but it has to come through us, period. Everything has to go through us, otherwise it's made him and, and the chain of command won't follow suit, so.
The building committee, I'm speaking for myself, my counterparts can chime in if they want to, is doing a fantastic job. They're doing exactly what we put them there to do and they have our full support, so. Please make sure that everything goes before, before them, before any decisions are made on any of those wish list items or, or anything for that.
Yeah, I think some of it, and I, I don't really wanna weigh in too much, but I think some of this is, is, is just out of wish list. I think some of it we don't need, quite frankly.
Well, just because we're building a new school, doesn't mean that everything inside has to be new? That I'm sure there's stuff in our existing school that can be brought over and used very efficiently.
I could sit here and probably tell you for another couple of hours that I was there for probably a half a day and walked that school with CSG and John Florio and was amazed at how much stuff we have. And a lot of it is new, speaking of shop equipment, you know, gym equipment, that kinda stuff. I mean, we went right down to copiers and, you know, a lot of it's leased, some of our big units, like the town hall has and the PD are all leased units. But we have a tremendous amount, and I won't bore you, with tabletop copiers. You know, gym equipment and shop equipment, that's brand new, some of the shop equipment. So we will get with Rusty and decide what is gonna, what's gonna be needed, what's gonna be moved and what's not gonna be moved as far as, or ordered for new. So absolutely, because I'm, I'm, we're only on the first phase and I'm concerned. I'm concerned, really concerned about where we are.
Well, and then, you know, hearing everything that's been breached because of the weather and everything else.
Yeah.
And, and I know Amar says it's not a lot, but I'm sorry, to us taxpayers, it is a lot. It doesn't matter if it's 10,000 or 100,000 dollars. It's, it's a lot when you're, and we know what kind of contingency money is left and how much is left to do of that project.
Two weeks ago, I was with Amar's counterpart, Kevin, and I was there probably three hours taking pictures of the damages from the water of the previous incident. I will be there tomorrow again, probably for the same amount of time, walking the project to see what's there. And, and I'm sure Amar will know what he's had to do, but yeah, it's concerning. It's really concerning. It's disheartening, quite frankly, to, to- And we did, we had six or seven inches of rain today. Unfortunately, it shouldn't have happened. And I, I would suspect Amar's contractors probably got a mouthful today from, from the Gil Bane side, but we have to get out in front of this. This is, this is a problem. And, you know, I, I couldn't get there today. I did talk to John Florio at about 8 o'clock on some other issues that I have to address with him tomorrow and some of the other site work, where we're putting the chiller pads and generator pads tomorrow. And I told John I'll be there as well to do that with him, so. Rusty, I don't know if you have anything to weigh in on as far as that equipment, but, you know.
Just, just to mention that our furniture and technology bids, that was a total of about 1.5 million. That came in 150,000 under budget. The equipment came in over budget, but the one contractor that bid all the items, they were just throwing numbers at it. Because the numbers are three times the value of the product, because we've already done all our research and know what we could buy the product for. So we're gonna look at an alternative way of buying the equipment. And the other thing that Dave mentioned-
Some of it, not to cut you off, some of it we might buy a statement.
Right.
John Florio said we can buy at a much better rate, so we're gonna look at that as well, as Rusty said. And the one contractor that bid on it, he's just-
Do you guys mark that stuff up?
Us?
Yeah.
No, we, we don't. This is just a- Yeah, no, this is purely a bid that goes directly to the town and the town contracts with those contractors.
So two of the bid, two out of the three were, were somewhat in line. The third guy was just, I mean, we couldn't understand where he came up with his numbers.
But the other two only bid some items and the ones that they bid, they were in line with the estimated cost. The third one bid everything, but something that was worth 5,000, they put a 35,000 odd bid in for it. You know, so you could see that the numbers were very skewed and we weren't gonna accept that bid. Now it's more a matter of how do we go back? But the building committee is also gonna look at those items. For instance, there are items that are in Phase Two that we don't have to procure now. We can put that off till the end of the, the project before we buy that, because it's gym equipment, it's fitness equipment and so on. There are some items that are part of Phase One for the art room, the science room. So those items, we do need to move on faster to get that in, in time for the, for the school.
Are they on the wish list?
That's, those are items that were always-
So some-
And I mean, just because you came in 150 lower on equipment and technology, doesn't mean that-
Right.
Or furniture and technology, you could now take that 150 and throw it over in equipment?
Right, right.
Because we might need it in contingency.
Exactly. And some of it, John Florio did say yes on some of the art equipment was an absolute. Some of it may not be. You know, on, on every different level, especially the project, the, the phase we're on right now. So on Monday, it'll be on our agenda again to decide what we do need on Phase One, what's a wish list and what we can move over because we already have it. There was a, what was the, the ice bath, you know, there was an ice bath. I didn't know we had an ice bath. We already have one presently. So do we need another one for 5,000? I don't think so. But those are the things we'll get into more on next week, as far as the equipment wise.
Particulars of the equipment, sure.
Sounds like you have a good handle on it.
Okay.
A long weekend. NBIS?
Yeah, well, so we, let's kinda cross these off. We're not going back. Anything else on MBHS? Any other questions? Anything else in the PD? Okay, NBIS?
Yeah, I, I briefed them a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting, Rusty, so I wanted you now to kinda give them a finalize where we're at.
So just, just to recap from the beginning, we had, it was a facade project and then we determined that in order to address some of the issues with the facade, we needed to do the roof and we, you, you gave us an additional service for that. And then the question came up about the metal standing scene roof and we gave a proposal to do that evaluation and do that work and we've done that as well. The final phase is the implementation phase of that, to put all the documents together. But in, in that process, we also realized that there was portions of the base room that we need to come down. We are addressing the signs, we're addressing other areas of the facade that need, that we discovered along the way. There are some minor site issues in, in terms of the thresholds, where the thresholds are heaving, that were taken care of in this package. So at the last, in April, I presented, we talked about a budget and we included all these items in that budget. And the budget is around 7.5 million dollars, including all the items. And it also includes all the design fees in that. That design fee in the budget was 244,000. At this point, what we're asking for is the implementation and some of the work that we've already done for the, the changes that have occurred. And we're asking for a fee of 78,000, 78,500. That brings us to a total of 100,000, I'm sorry, 226,450. So the budget we had and the estimate was 344,000. This would be 226,450. And then that would cover all the expenses to date for the, for the completion of the project from the design side of the project. From our side, yeah. That includes bidding, it includes construction administration, all the way to the end of the project.
So, so how is it going out to bid? Is it just, is it going out to bid as the, the metal roof, the facade, to clean it all up? As an ad alternate or that's the project?
So that, that, I, we, we were told a couple of meetings ago that that was a request to make it an alternate, just so that there's a, a level of comfort that we're not gonna be over, over budget in, in case it's over budget. So one of the things that we have to do now is, is change our documents to reflect that. Unfortunately, it means we gotta change every, every drawing, because it become when you made an ad alternate, the base bid becomes a main, the flat roof. So all our drawings are now reflect the flat roof as the base bid. The documents that we currently have, those details will have to change for the, for the flat roof. And then we'll keep the details that we have for the metal roof and we'll bid the metal roof package as an ad alternate.
What's your next question?
So you'll have an option when the bids come in, if the bids are high, we have the option just to go with the, the base bid, which is a flat EBM roof. If it's a, they come in well and we can accept the alternate, then you will have the option to make that decision on, on putting the metal roof on, on the building as you've designed it.
How much of the rooftop mechanicals are gonna be hidden under that, that metal roof if we-
The facade?
The metal facade, if we choose to go with that?
I think you really, if you recall from the images we showed, just everything on the front of the building. So the mechanicals that are on the building right adjacent to the auditorium, to the left of the art front, that will be hidden. The mechanicals that, when you're standing in the quad, you won't see the mechanicals in that, in that case. But you're not, we're not screening the mechanicals from the back.
Right, you'll see it from the road.
Yeah, from St. Augustine's side of the road, you'll see it.
You'll see the campus from the front.
I'm just trying to figure out if it's gonna be more just aesthetics or if it's actually the metal roof's gonna serve a function.
We did say that the metal roof, from what I remember, had the function of sheathing some moisture off that roof.
Yeah, but reality is, it's mostly aesthetic.
It's mostly aesthetic.
Yeah. Tying it into everything else.
Right.
Yeah, it'll just put the whole campus together. It's a facade.
Right.
That's all it's gonna do, it's hide mechanicals. I mean, that's why we decided from the direction you guys, that we told Rusty a couple of weeks back, or probably a month ago now, is to do that saddle.
Well, because now that we're hearing about the brickwork and some of it is compromised and we don't exactly know what that is and how much it is compromised and stuff underneath it, that, that 7.5 million, I'm not so sure is going to do that.
Right, we could be-
I mean, I, I'm just leery. That, that has, everyone knows, that has been the albatross around our neck from the day it went online and I-
And we had this discussion. I don't know what we're gonna get into there. I'm quite frank, I'm concerned.
I'll give you, I'll give you a little story that's gonna make, maybe make you feel better or not. We just bid 150,000 square foot roof in Coventry in another school and a, and a smaller 30,000 roof. And when we went to the state, we were told that it's gonna be at around 50 dollars a square foot. told that it's gonna be at around fifty dollars a square foot, and we were around thirty-five. And I was, I said, okay, well, it's too late, the, the town had already gone back one time to get more money for the project. We bid it, and we actually bid it in July, and one of the requirements was that they do some work in August. And it was just, let's take a shot at it, see what happens. The bids came in one point three million under budget.
That's great.
And they did the work in August on part of the roof of the high school and completed the other roof. Now, we, it's one of those things where we hit it just right, because from what I understand, a lot of these larger companies have been stockpiling material, insulation in particular. So, they did that, a few jobs went, were put on hold, and then all of a sudden, they find themselves setting material on hand, and at least this is what the contractors told us, so they've been after it pretty aggressively. Whether we are as lucky on this project, I can't say for sure, but at least it gives us some, you know, some idea of where the numbers are coming in.
Some hope, and the fact that trending the economy right now, and the workload that's out of the state right now, and, and contractors, they are being aggressive. You know, in, in my industry right now, you know, we're finding that, that work that wasn't gonna be happening, all of a sudden, may come to fruition, because concrete guys, concrete pricing, people are getting aggressive. I think that's gonna be, I, I hope in our case here in town, we will see that as well.
So, what's the, what's the timeline on the middle school?
So, I told the committee about six weeks, you know, six weeks to get the documents. We were like ninety-five percent done, and so we're gonna go back and redo the documents, so we need about six weeks, and I wanna get it out to bid before, in, in the fall, to, so that we have numbers in hand before the end of the year.
Okay.
And, and then start in the spring? I mean.
The construction would start in the spring, put the masonry in the spring, moving into the roof in the summer.
Okay, so we'll have to, I mean, some of this work has to start while school is still in session?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
I mean, it's a big project, I, I know that, and it's.
The masonry definitely, the roof would probably be in the summertime.
Okay.
Sure.
Before we leave, we get it out to bid by October, is what our hope was, depending on Rusty.
Before we leave this topic, I had asked Gina to add to the agenda, but I don't see it on here. Just an update from the town attorney, because Attorney Leclerc had alluded at some point that we might have some sort of recourse, or at least he was gonna look into it. If you're not prepared to talk about it, we could talk about it next meeting, I just.
We can, we should probably do that in the executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fair.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, so, so you need us to approve this?
The ad scores, yeah. And that includes the, the alternate, the redesign for the alternate.
Okay. So, I would like to make a motion to accept the additional service proposal oh-three from QA and M on NBIS for a fee of seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, you have to add it to the agenda.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's not on the agenda at this point, so why don't we?
We weren't given that information.
Have a second on that, and then we'll, you can add the.
Okay. Amend the agenda to put it here or under new business?
I'll put it underneath. I think, we can put it underneath, underneath this, correct?
It's your pleasure, you can do it now, you can do it later.
Well, we do it now.
Okay, I'd like to make a, a motion to amend the agenda to add item eight, B triple I, A, I guess, because it's in, in the I S, to add additional fee structure for QA and M.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by W. Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right. We'll accept a, a motion to pay quotas discussed.
Yes, so I'd like to just make the motion to accept the additional service proposal oh-three from QA and M on the NBIS project in the amount of seventy-eight thousand five hundred.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. Rusty, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
David, thank you for your time.
Thanks, you guys.
To Councilor Polichio, that the fire grant's still in the works, we're not kicked out, we are, as of the debacle on the other side that Lisa and I are working on, I was told on Friday that it is, they are just only awarding a couple of bids a week, and there have been a tremendous amount of bids going out.
Sure.
Keep our fingers crossed. I just told the fire chief the same thing. They were supposed to award by the end of August. Originally, it was supposed to be June, then they said August, so we are still in the running.
So, I ask a question about that.
Yes.
Let's, let's say that we agreed to buy the fire truck before the end of September. We haven't gotten the grant. If we got the grant after the fact, does that grant go towards the jet?
I will ask that question.
We didn't get an answer on that yet.
Yeah, we don't have that answer yet.
Yeah.
Let's, we can, we have that underneath, even though we're gonna pass by this and up on nine, let's talk about that and nine, just so we can get through the.
I only asked.
No, I know, it's, I get it, it's appropriate.
I was brought up, and I, I will actually inquire as well.
Yeah, it's, it's something that has not been completely filled, figured out yet.
No, I know, but he brought it up, so I just.
Yeah, no, no, that's fair.
I just wanted to let you guys know that it was, we're not out.
Yeah.
We've made it all this, all the way to this point now, so we're hoping that, you know, and I'll, you guys.
Continue to say our prayers.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And Lisa will be in touch tomorrow. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Okay, anything for STW Roof? Dave, is anything for STW Roof before you take off? Anything for STW Roof before you take off? I know you didn't meet yesterday, but.
No, nothing, we'll have an update on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, guys.
All right, thanks, Dave. Okay, memo regarding collapsing the RFP number three, townwide park feasibility study, no action required, but.
I already spoke to that, sorry.
Yeah, you spoke to it already. Okay, I'll move on to number nine, community events and presentations. We were going to meet with item A, update on a replacement for Tower One, that's been pushed into the twentieth. To answer your question, and they, and I think all of our question, the concern is that there's a large amount of money out there, that we were hoping to queef on to North Branford in order to help pay for this. It's a million dollar grant, which would be tremendous. Has not been figured out yet, if, if we did all allocate to purchase this spec vehicle, if that would be viable or not, but it's of the utmost importance to figure that out.
I think tabling is a great idea, I think it'll give us, we'll have a clearer picture